Well, good evening, everyone. Well, first, let me compliment all the seniors. You are all seniors here, correct? And now for the front row. I think you're a little past that, but... Oh, maybe they could be seniors, yeah. Well, welcome, Mr. Dela Cruz's class. And thank you so much for being here. You're welcome at any time, and any time the city can facilitate anything to talk about government for you, please let us know. Mr. Dela Cruz, you know how I feel about you. I think you're a wonderful teacher, and thank you, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you, President.
Hey. Is that okay, Mr. Attorney? Can I say that without any problem? Okay, thank you. All right. All right, so let's go on to...I'd like to call forward Bobby Contreras from our Father's House for the opening prayer. Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor. Last month, I was here representing our company, Paradise, and today, I'm here representing the Church and our Heavenly Father. So it's truly my privilege. So Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day of life, Father. We're so joyful for life and life abundance, Father, the God that you give to us, Father God. And I'm thank you for this meeting here today, Father, representing you and asking for your presence to come, Father God, amongst these leaders who are before me, future leaders who are behind me. Father God, it's always a good thing when young men and young women are gonna rise up and become the leaders that you've called them to be, Father God. We pray, Father God, for wisdom. We know that there's wisdom and a council of many, and we thank you for the council, men and women that are here today. You poured out your wisdom upon them. We thank you for our mayor, Father God, who loves the city of Las Vanos and loves the people as well, Father. We ask your blessings upon this meeting, blessings upon the city, blessings upon the city workers and everybody that's here, Father. And Father God, we pray even for the schools. As these young people are behind me, Father God, they represent the schools. So we pray your hedge of protection upon our high schools, our junior high schools, and our grammar schools, Father. We give you all the glory in Jesus' name. Everybody agree? They said?
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the December 5th meeting of the Las Vanos City Council. And Chief, would you lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance? Could I have everyone stand, please?
All right.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every intention of all fraud.
And roll call in the final form of this council tonight. Director Maloney?
Furia?
Here.
Johnson Santos?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Silveira?
Present.
Walta? Here. Consideration of approval of agenda. And Mr. Silveira, would you make the motion, please? Okay, get that. Do I have a second? Mr. Furia?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion by Silveira and second by Furia to approve the agenda stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Consideration of certification of vote of municipal election, November 6, 2018. Item 5A, City Council Resolution Number 6024, certifying results of the Merced County General Election held in the city of Las Vanos on November 6, 2018, as it pertains to the election of the mayor, city council members for Districts 2 and 3, city clerk and city treasurer. Should we do these individually?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion pertaining to 5A? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6024 as submitted.
Mrs. Silveira?
I will second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Silveira, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6024. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item 5B, City Council Resolution Number 6025, certifying results of the Merced County General Election held in the city of Las Vanos on November 6, 2018, as it pertains to Measure H, Las Vanos Essential City Services Measure. Director, or super, or, go ahead. Let's try council member Louis, or Santos.
Thank you. I'd like to approve the Resolution Number 6025.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, motion by Johnson Santos, second by Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6025. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Administration of Oath of Office to Elected Officials. Item 6A, Mayor Michael Walta, council members Tom Furia, District 2, and Brett Jones, District 3, City Treasurer Kim Tomas. So could I have the following individuals please come forward? Okay. Item number seven, roll call. Okay, I'll give you...
Furia?
Here.
Johnson Santos?
Here.
Jones?
Present.
Lewis?
Here.
Walta? Here. We do have a quorum. Item number eight, Presentations, City Council Resolution Number 6026, a resolution of commendation to Scott Silveira. Mrs. Silveira, where are you? Okay, all right. Let me, let me make sure, so before we get that first.
So I'm gonna hand this to you first. And this is why don't you show it to the...we are retiring this badge, Silveira council member, and also former mayor pro tempore. So I'd like to read the proclamation, Resolution Number 6026, a resolution commendation to Scott Silveira. Whereas Scott Silveira was elected as city council member...Wait a minute, do I need a microphone? Is it working? Okay.
Whereas Scott Silveira was elected as a city council member of Las Vanos on November 4, 2010. Whereas Scott Silveira has faithfully served the city of Las Vanos and its city council for eight years as a city council member, and by his devotion to his duties, Scott Silveira has greatly contributed to the governmental process of the city of Las Vanos. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council and the city of Las Vanos that it hereby expresses its sincere gratitude and appreciation to Scott Silveira for his service to the city of Las Vanos and his capacity of city council member. Be it therefore resolved that the embossed copy of this resolution be presented to Scott Silveira. The foregoing resolution was adopted at its regular city council meeting of the city council of the city of Las Vanos, held on December 5, 2018, by the following affirmative vote: Mike Walta, Tom Furia, Deborah Lewis, Veronica Johnson Santos, and Brett Jones, council member.
And I'm sorry that I got my backs to the folks behind me, but I did have a few notes, and I wanted to make sure that I got through everything. So first off, I'd like to say is, is thank you to the citizens of Las Vanos. For the past eight years, you've honored me by electing me to represent you here at the city of Las Vanos. I want to thank all the city employees. We have a group of hardworking, dedicated individuals that have helped keep this city going. I remember when I got elected in 2010, things weren't looking so great in the city of Las Vanos. We were, we had just come through the worst economic times that I've ever experienced in my lifetime, one of the hardest-hit housing economies in the country, and it was kind of hold on for the ride, because there really wasn't a lot of excitement. It was not a matter of what we were gonna cut, it was how much, and how were we gonna be able to sustain. So to the citizens that did give backs before I got here, I mean, to the employees, I want to say thank you for bearing with us and helping us get through those lean times. And I didn't coin the phrase, but somebody in staff did, is that the city of Las Vanos is healthy, we're not wealthy. So, and we've been able to, through what I'd like to consider to be strong fiscal policy, not spending more money than we make, we were able to get through those lean times. So again, to the staff, to the department heads, I want to thank you. Department heads, I'm leaving you guys, having made a bunch of new friends, and it's these relationships that I won't forget, and I just want to say thank you. And so to all of you sitting here, thank you, guys. Thank you for listening to some of my nonsense, and when I would go off on tangents. Thank you for being very, very quick into getting your responses back to me, so that I could get responses back to my citizens, and all of you are here tonight, and so thank you, guys, for that. And then I just wanted to share a few memories of League of Cities. We would go to League of Cities conferences, and I think, I want to tell Brett this, go to these conferences, because it's not only the sessions that you go to that you learn valuable information, it's networking with other city council members across the state, but it's also getting to spend time with your department heads, and getting to know them outside the confines of the office, and getting to know about their families, and how they think, and so it just makes for a better relationship. So, I'm getting a little nervous, and I don't know why. So I just want to say is, is I learned things that Sonia loves Dick's Last Resort in San Diego, Bill loves when people share their desserts. And again, Brett, I just want to tell you that it's important that you go. Veronica, I got to spend one with you. I would encourage everybody to take advantage of those. And then Lucy, just thank you for loving the journey, okay? And so, all kidding aside, what I do want to say is, is I've had the fortune of representing my hometown, and now going on to supervisor, my hometown just got a little bit bigger. So I'm still gonna be here, I'm still gonna be representing you folks, but thank you for giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, before we go on, we have one housekeeping item to take care of, and I'll do it from here. On City Council Resolution Number 6026, a resolution of commendation to Scott Silveira, do I have a motion, please? Moved by Mr. Furia. Second by Mrs. Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Jerry, come forward.
How are you?
I have to tell you that this man has been in office longer than Lincoln.
Don't tell lies, either.
But I have to tell you that he's been a fine representative for the West Side, District 5, for how many years, Jerry?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight years. Twenty-eight years. I was still in high school. Yeah, you're right, I wasn't. I sincerely would like to read this proclamation, recognizing the retirement of Jerry O'Banion. Whereas Jerry O'Banion was born and raised in Dos Palos, California, and graduated from Dos Palos High School in 1964. Whereas in 1969, Jerry O'Banion received his Bachelor of Arts degree in general sciences and agricultural education, and credential from Fresno State University. And whereas Jerry O'Banion served as a council member for the city of Dos Palos from 1980 to 1987, and served as mayor from 1987 to 1990. As one of the longest-serving members of the Merced County Board of Supervisors, Jerry O'Banion has represented District 5, the West Side communities, for seven consecutive terms since 1990, and said it was an honor and a privilege to represent the community in which he grew up. And whereas Jerry O'Banion will enjoy his retirement, spending time with his wife, Dolly, who's from Las Vanos, their children and grandchildren, and says he will continue to stay active in the community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Las Vanos do hereby commend Jerry O'Banion on the 28 years of dedicated service to Merced County as District 5 supervisor, and congratulate and wish him well in his retirement.
Scotty took my speech. But that's okay. I'm gonna go over to the side so I can see everyone. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. I want to thank the mayor for the recognition, and make sure and call Scotty when you need something, because my number's gonna be unlisted January 7. Scotty takes over January 7 at noon. I leave office on January 7 at noon. It's been a great ride. It's been great to represent Las Vanos and Dos Palos, and there's been a lot of experiences. As far as on the Board of Supervisors, I've served with 17 different individuals on that board. So think about the number of folks that you serve with over here. Probably a couple less than that. But there's a, there's a, there is also five on our board, so it's not like a school board. There's been, probably, probably one of the biggest accomplishments that I think that I was involved in was the moving of the Merced County line. Six square miles of Fresno County became Merced County back in 2002. It took 12 years to work on that with the help of county administration, and to bring in, and I don't know if you're familiar with it, but Bryant Junior High School in Dos Palos was out in Fresno County. And I had worked with three different supervisors from Fresno County to try to get that accomplished, and wasn't getting anywhere. But you know what broke it loose? Emergency services. The emergency services for Bryant School has to come out of Fresno, because it's in Fresno County. And a young man broke his leg, and Riggs Ambulance, which is the Merced County Service, immediately was out there and took care of the young man. But he couldn't be transported, because he had to go clear to Fresno. He laid there in Fresno County for four hours before the ambulance finally from Fresno came out and picked him up and took him in. And the next day, the supervisor from that district of Fresno County called me and said, "Let's get it done." And that is basically what took it and made it to where it became a reality. Now, it wasn't an easy thing to do, because it took state legislation from the state of California to get approval for that. So I think that's probably one of the most important things that I was able to accomplish in the 28 years that I was on the board. There was a lot of good times, and there was a lot of bad times, but overall, and Scotty had mentioned something about the economic downturn. Well, we went through three different economic downturns while I was on the board, and probably the first, the worst one was 1992. Any of you born after 1992? Some of you maybe, but we closed, we vote, I voted to close libraries. And I couldn't believe that I did that. But you know what we did? We turned around, and the money that we saved, we're going to save on not having the employees come to work in the libraries, we paid the electrical bills with that money, and turned around, and volunteers took over the library system here in Merced County, and operated it for two and a half years. And finally, we started getting back out of the downturn, and were able to come back. And everybody talks about the 1980s, '83, I believe it was, was the highest level of the library system that Merced County have. And I'm happy to say that we are back to those levels and a little higher today. And in addition, we've even looking at going into the bookmobiles. We have one, we're looking at getting one additional, so we can take the library out to the different communities that don't have the service. I'm very proud of all the things that I was involved in over the years, and I've served with several mayors of the city of Las Vanos, and I first served with several mayors from the city of Dos Palos, and I even had Gustine in my district at one time. But that was a miserable time, because Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, I went to Dos Palos, Las Vanos, and, excuse me, Gustine, Dos Palos, and Las Vanos City Council meetings. Every one of them in those days. Now, I've been neglectful mayor since you've been here, to be honest with you, as far as on getting to them. I get to some of them, but not all of them. But I want to thank all the people in Las Vanos that have been supporters of mine over the years, and I wish Scotty well. I think he's qualified to do the job. Now it's up to him to do that job. And I wish him well, and hopefully he'll have 28 years there also, or more. And one last thing, there is one additional person in Merced County. He is no longer alive, but he served for 28 years in District 4, and that is Harry Schmidt from Gustine, and he, he served 28 years also. So it's not a new thing in Merced County. Again, thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to come and receive this plaque from the city of Las Vanos.
All right. Let's go on to Item Nine. Reorganization of the City Council. Selection of Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, I would like to bring forth the name of Doronika Johnson Santos as our new mayor pro tem for this year. Can I have a second, please? Mr. So... Oh, wait a minute. We have to go to Mr. Jones. Would you like to make the second?
Yes. I'll second that.
Okay. So it's been motioned by the mayor and seconded by Councilmember Jones to approve Doronika Johnson Santos as our new mayor pro tem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried? Do you accept? I should probably should ask that first, though. Okay. Congratulations. Okay, let's go on to Item Ten. Public Forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. And I remind those, if you have a cell phone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, my name is Denal D'Souza, resident of Los Banas. First, I want to congratulate Scotty for his new position. I think he'll be wonderful at it. He's gonna have some big boots to fill. But also, thank you to Mr. Jerry O'Banion. He's done a wonderful job over the years. I remember him sitting here in this council. And what I admire about him, it doesn't matter if you like his ideas or not, he's always gonna speak his mind. And I think that's wonderful. I... You know, he's always fought for our city and got a lot done. So thank you very much for all you've done. I'm here because I... Well, there's a couple of things. One of them is, I watched one of the council meetings where people are really upset in our town about this housing boom that's going on. And I heard Mr. Valalta turn to Mrs. Elms and ask, "Is that true that our council doesn't have anything to do with it? They were already on the books?" And she answered truthfully, "They were on the books, and they are." But what Mr. or mayor is not saying is that he's approving them right now. They're coming forward because they're expired. So now the current council has to approve them. It's up to them to approve how many are gonna go through and what they're gonna pay, the new fees or the old fees. So you are, in a sense, responsible for the housing, that problem that's going on now. Because the houses have been there for 10 years, but they're coming forward to your council, so it's up to you. Our schools are overcrowded, and I know you're gonna say, "We can't slow it down because of housing." But you can't slow it down because of police, fire, and infrastructure. And all those exist. Our police is overwhelmed. And in fact, today at Miano, we had people almost getting hit. It was so overwhelming. And you call them and they come right away. They are wonderful. Doesn't matter how many cops they have on duty. They come to any school and they patrol and they help. They've helped us several times, and we really appreciate that. But we need to start thinking about our city. And I keep this big boom going on. I don't understand how you people can just keep it going. You don't think about our future. We can't get up and down the highway. A few years ago, that came up about the highway. And Mr. Freya brought up that we know how to get around our town. Well, guess what? So does everybody else now. Everywhere you go in this town, you can't get from one side of town that quick. I'm not here to criticize anybody. I just need you to please look at everything. You don't have to keep putting everything through. You're here to make good decisions. These children right here can't even get a job in this town. That's all we're getting is houses. I mean, the infrastructure matters too. And so you need to please look at this stuff. There's houses on the way out of town behind 711, as you go to Stevenson. My daughter was looking for a house, and she told me. And I went to look, and I couldn't believe the driveways. You can't even fit a whole car in it. We have Ms. Lewis saying, "We can't have more than two cars." You can't even fit one car in that driveway. So how is that getting by you? I don't understand. How is that getting by you? You're putting sidewalks over by the baseball field. They're not even in the lighting district. They don't even pay fees. We pay fees. Why doesn't everyone pay fees? I know for a fact, some of the cities have put old residents into the lighting district so they can all pay fees. You should look at that. Put it on the ballot. You know, everyone should pay fees. They all get their streets swept. They get their trees trimmed. They get their parks trimmed. They get the same stuff we get, but they don't pay fees. So you're building sidewalks over there now. They got those houses cheap years ago. Look at how they got them. It was when the dam was being built. Some of them were $12,000. Whoever wanted sidewalks, got sidewalks. The other ones did not. If you notice, there's pieces of sidewalks here and there. So that is why. And so now you're gonna put sidewalks. They don't pay any fees. Why not put them in the lighting district? Have them pay fees and then bring that in. I understand you're getting from a certain tax that was already on there. But we're putting taxes too. We're putting into lighting district and then some of us going into general fund. You just please look at all this stuff. You know, you need to... When you make these decisions, don't just make them and not look at the background and how that came about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff. I'm back again. This is our mayor, Jim Valentine, resident of Los Banas. I'm here regarding the Qantas Club of Los Banas and our annual Christmas Eve dinner in conjunction with the Fire Department. Just reminding people that we're doing it again this year. Like I said, it's our 35th year. Dinner will be served on the 24th. And quite honestly, I don't even know what day of the week that is. We forget days of the week with this time of the year. Dinner is from 11:00 to 2:00. We'll have our traditional barbecue chicken, pasta, salad, roll, pie, and beverage. Santa will come and visit feeding twelve and one. The dinner is free to all, thanks to the many generous individuals and organizations and businesses in our community. I'd ask Chief Breezy, if you see anybody on the street that day looking for a meal, send them over to the fire station. Masons wants to keep busy. Anybody that needs a meal can give me a call at 769-6703. And I've already talked to city manager. There'll be flyers in the lobby of the city hall talking about our dinner. And you've already committed to driving, so I appreciate that, delivering dinners. Hopefully, we're not gonna lose Jerry after this dinner. He's been there for maybe 25 or 28 of those years. He cooks the meat and chicken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the 24th is a Monday. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum. And we will go on to consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have Director Maloney.
Items on the consent agenda are... Those are the numbers. Two-one-three-three-four-nine, three-two-one-three-seven-seven-one, in the amount of $1,210,000.
$718.44. City Council Resolution Number 6027, Approving a Boundary Map and Declaring Its Intention to Annex Property to the City of Los Banas, Community Facilities District Number 2002-Dest-01, Public Safety Services, and to levy a special tax therein to finance certain public safety services for such Community Facilities District, Shaughnessy Village, a subdivision of approximately 31.9 acres, located east of Mercy Springs Road and north of Scripps Drive. And City Council Resolution Number 6028, Rejecting the bids for one new 2018-2019 model brush chipper. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? If not, do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, seconded by Santos, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item Number 12, Public Hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 12A, Public Hearing. To receive public comment and disclose the final funding amounts and accomplishments of the 2015 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Agreement 1-0-5-6-7. And we're gonna go to our Community and Economic Development Director, Elms.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So this is going to be a closeout report for our 2015... Excuse me. 2015 CDBG program. Let's see if we can put on that PowerPoint presentation. All right.
Oh, good.
Yeah, perfect.
Didn't even touch it.
So just a little bit of background on this particular item. It's a CDBG program. And CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant. And it authorizes the use of funds to assist low and moderate income families or aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight. The funding is allocated to the state from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. So that's from the federal level. The funds are then distributed to the various states. And then this particular program is administered by the state, the California State Department of Housing and Community Development, which is known as HCD. So this particular grant, CDBG grant, Community Development Block Grant, has certain criteria and order for a community to be eligible or for that activity that the grant is for to be eligible. So its three national objectives have to be met. Well, it's actually one of the three have to be met. So first, it needs to benefit low-income persons or households. It needs to eliminate slum and blight. Or it can be for an urgent need. And that urgent need needs to be handled in real time. So for example, say there's an earthquake and there's damages, and there's funds that are needed for a specific community. Even fires can be eligible for an urgent need. So back in 2015, the City of Los Banas applied for a Community Development Block Grant funding for a public service activity. And that was for code enforcement. We were awarded in September of 2015 a contract for $322,500. The funded contract was for code enforcement officer, and this was for a contract code enforcement officer. It was to be utilized in designated low and moderate income areas. In the next slide, I'm gonna show you where that area was. And we had to meet the national objective of the prevention and elimination of slum or blight in a specific low-to-moderate-income area. So this is the map. That specific area was bound by Pacheco Boulevard, Badger Flat Road, H Street in Wilmot, and Mercy Springs Road. It consists of a specific census tract that is designated for low and moderate income. So the closeout report, we are required by HCD, so Housing and Community Development, to provide a closeout report and hold a public hearing. We do provide a semi-annual program income report and an annual performance report that we do yearly. And this closeout report summarizes all of the grant activities. And it is required, like I said, by HCD prior to submittal of our closeout for this particular activity. So just a summary of this particular grant. Grant 15-CDBG-1-0-5-6-7 has been active since fiscal year 2016-17. The program income funds were spent, and that was $52,713. We were required to spend that program income prior to requesting any reimbursement from CDBG. And that was because that was program income that we had received and accumulated from other CDBG programs. Then the city expended $300,000 under a professional service agreement with CSG Consultants, Inc. That was the contract code enforcement group that we hired. We had, if you can recall, we did a request for proposal. We took bids and selected a firm based on those proposals. Then the city received reimbursement in the amount of $22,500 for general administration of the grant. That's staff's time on the grant. And then the total grant award was $322,500. And all funds have been expended to date. And we were required to expend those funds by September 30th, 2018. The next slide, I would like our chief to go over to talk about our accomplishments.
Thank you, Stacey. Thank you for the presentation. Mayor, members of the council, I'm very pleased to present this to you tonight. The CDBG grant was a needed code enforcement portion of our program to bring an increased level of service to the community of Los Banas. Can we bring that presentation back up for me, please? Sorry about that. There we go. So as we talk about accomplishments, when we originally brought CSG on, the intent with them was to make them perform a lot of the more minor nuisance abatement issues, abandoned vehicles, some minor nuisance things. Minor nuisance abatement. As we worked with them, we realized that they were much more technically adept at performing more complex investigations. So we turned them loose on some of the bigger things that we had within the census tract. So in addition to those 1,250 code enforcement investigations that they worked, approximately 1,200 of which were close to our satisfaction, which means that we went out, identified municipal code violations. We worked with the owners or the tenants of the property to educate them on what the violation was, and then requested that they voluntarily comply. In a vast majority of cases, that's exactly what happened. Because our code enforcement theme is voluntary compliance. We go out, educate, and the last thing that we want to do with our residents is cite them for a municipal code violation underneath our code enforcement efforts. So 1,200 accomplished cases was a good number to reach for CSG. The other thing that they did was successfully processed 370 abandoned vehicles in Los Banas. Now, what an abandoned vehicle is basically is if you've seen a car in your neighborhood that has a flat tire, damaged windshield that doesn't move, the registration's expired, there's cobwebs underneath the car, there's leaves. Obviously, the car has not been moved in days, weeks, or months. We go out and target those vehicles because they're blight. They reduce the value of your property in your neighborhood. And so we're keen to that, and we try to work as diligently as we can to accomplish some of those, the removal of some of those vehicles. Some of the bigger accomplishments that we tasked CSG with, this is the first and foremost one. We took over our code enforcement efforts back in 2015-ish. This house became a problem. It's at the corner of C Street and Seventh Street. We had a young gentleman with CSG named Gene who worked on it. We ended up issuing the homeowner of this property, who lived in New York City, over $160,000 worth of violations. The tough part when you deal with residences is that they change hands commonly. They go in and out of perhaps foreclosure. There's lenders that get involved. And that's exactly what we experienced with this home. But right as the grant was closing, we reached out to a lender who had assumed responsibility for that property and explained to them that we'd be willing to negotiate the waiver of those citations if they would just clean up the property. And very promptly, they did so. So we're proud to say that we were able to remove that blight property from our residents, our neighborhood there in the area of Seventh and C. A second one that we tasked them with was a triplex in the area of the 200 block of West J Street. There is a small building here that you see pictured along with the triplex that was in disrepair. It was vacant at the time. It was being vandalized frequently. It was an attractive nuisance for homeless and other individuals in that neighborhood. So our CSG representative reached out to the property owner and began a dialogue with them. And we're proud to say that that home has been repaired. Doors have been replaced. Windows have been replaced. And the biggest change, this is one of the photographs of just one of the units in the triplex. The entire property now has been... triplex, the entire property now has been cleaned up. They have tenants in the, all three of the units now. That used to be two carports. It's now three enclosed garage doors, the new cinder block fence, windows have been replaced. We have revitalized that complex there. And prior to doing that, we spent a lot of time on the patrol side, putting out fires, literally putting out fires from transient encampments, running people off, because we were trying to keep that property as best we could, minimizing the nuisance behavior, because the tenants around that property were affected by what was going on. So we're really pleased with how that property owner voluntarily complied with our request to improve that property. A third one was in the 200 block of I Street. This is a before photograph of it. It had been abandoned, abandoned. We went out and we do inspections through our code enforcement efforts. We use the building department, the fire department. We team up commonly with those three, our three departments. We go out and we do inspections, and we were able to get the property owner to voluntarily comply to improve that property. They have done so. This was a mid-project photograph. They have now completed that, upgraded that property. The house is back down off of the stilts. There's a cement foundation. It's been painted, and I believe there is a tenant in that property currently. Third, we took on the process of going out and identifying, I think it was six initially, six multi-unit residences in Los Banas in the area just north of the hospital. Code enforcement building and fire went out and did inspections. They identified substandard areas on the exterior of these properties, and we set forth a path with the property management company and the property owners to repair some of those facilities. And we're pleased, we're not done, but we're pleased with the progress that we have. It's hard to tell in this picture, but the roof is in disrepair. In one of the rain gutters, they'd use some form of spray-on or paint-on roofing material to prevent the leaks, and it was very unsightly. So they have since repaired those areas. There's another complex just on the other side of that, to the north of that property. They can't, you can't see in the photograph, but it too has had a repaired roof. They've replaced windows, and they have made that environment much more livable for their tenants and the surrounding neighborhood. This is a hotel on Pacheco Boulevard that we turned our code enforcement attention to after receiving a lot of complaints about the property. Currently, that entire hotel is closed off. There's two portions of that. It's kind of a V shape on the western edge of it. There's a single story. It's five or six apartments, excuse me, hotel rooms on the western edge, and then you see this two-story portion of it here on the eastern edge. They have almost completed the work on the western edge, the single-story side, new stucco, new doors, new windows, new interior, making the property much more appealing, and they are working on the eastern edge, this piece of the property currently. So the entire complex is fenced off, and they're doing improvements to it. So we're really proud of those efforts. The biggest part with our code enforcement grant that is a necessity in order to accomplish these goals is the resource of people being basically tenacious about everything that they do and going back out and back out and back out, communicating, an ongoing dialogue with the property owner or the tenant to improve their property. And like I said, we're just, we're happy and we're very pleased with the outcome of that project because we have affected a number of properties in our community and made them better. We've improved the situation. And that is all I have for the presentation. We are considering filing for another CDBG grant for code enforcement in the upcoming NOFA that will be closing, I think, in March, or opening in March.
February.
February. So we'll see. It's a, it's a big project, but it's definitely useful in our community. Any questions?
No, I just want to personally thank you for the, for, you know, upgrading a lot of these properties. It's, it's only going to make Los Banas a better place to live, and we have more to do, and it's, we've passed ordinances now to where if someone has four apartments or more, they're going to get a mandatory inspection. They're going to make sure that people deserve, or they do live, in a place that is habitable. And all you government students that are sitting out there, if you see something that you feel is not right, where someone's living in a place that's substandard, let your teacher know or call us, because everyone deserves to live in a place that's fitting for them and for their children. So the only way we can improve is to have people report to us deficiencies. And it's like anything, if we don't know about it, sometimes the owners are just going to collect rent and they're not going to let, and they're not going to make these improvements until someone calls them on it. So as you're growing up, and those of you who remain in Los Banos, help us out, because it's very important. And Chief, I can't tell you enough how proud I am of what you've done and what you're going to do. And as we go on, we're going to make even more improvements to this community where everyone is going to have a fitting place to live, and if they don't, then the owners are going to pay for it, and they're going to make sure that it is. Council members, any other comments I'd like to make? Yes? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. I also would like to thank our chief, our code enforcement department, and the organization that we received the CDBG grant for, to take care of these issues and problems. As I was watching the presentation, most of those violations were in the district that I represent. So I'm really, really happy to see that people are able to live in something less than substandard. Everyone deserves to live in housing that's suitable. So again, congratulations to everyone who worked on this, and my hats off to you for the hard work that you did. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go back to Director Elms, because she has a little more to say. Director Elms?
Yep. So just to wrap this up and to satisfy the requirements of the CDBG grant, we do have to have a public hearing. We do need to hold a public hearing, and a public hearing notice was published in the Los Banas Enterprise on November 23, 2018. And as of today's date, no comments have been received, but I am asking that the City Council would open the public hearing and receive any feedback from the community on this particular grant. And there is also a sign-in sheet, so please sign in, students. You'd be, you're very welcome to please sign in. That way, we can report back to CDBG that we held this public hearing, and we had lots of students in attendance. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council open the public hearing, receive public comment and feedback on this particular CDBG grant, and close the public hearing so that staff can report back to CDBG, HCD. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, item 12A, Public Hearing, to receive public comment and disclose the final funding amounts and accomplishments of the 2015 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Agreement 10567. And no action is to be taken, but we are opening a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and again, there is no action to be taken on this item. All right, let's go on to 12B, Public Hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of adopting an ordinance to amend and reorganize Article 20, Chapter 3, Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to off-street parking, and amend and reorganize Article 32, Chapter 3, Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to recreational vehicles. And we're going to go to Community and Economic Development Director, Elms. Again?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation for this one as well.
Okay.
So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on this particular item. It's just going to be a brief overview, as this is the second reading for this particular ordinance, and it was originally presented to the City Council, actually, back in October, but the first reading was on November 7. The City Council waived the first reading of this ordinance and introduced ordinance number 1165 by title. So just a brief overview of what this particular ordinance does. It defines what a driveway is, what an approved driveway is, and what an improved parking area is. It requires a simple zoning clearance certificate to ensure that residents are complying with this new ordinance, which would be free to the residents. It requires an encroachment permit if the property owner is utilizing or accessing their property other than their existing driveway or curb cut. So if they're accessing their property without using their driveway, then they're going to need an encroachment permit to put a driveway. It prohibits parking on unpaved surfaces, and it allows the use of existing gravelled driveways as a non-conforming use. And as I had previously discussed, this is to grandfather older residents that weren't constructed with a driveway originally. It is, this particular ordinance, parking can only occur on a paved driveway or an improved parking area, so it designates where parking can be. It limits front yard parking to a maximum of 50% of the front yard, and it has to be on an improved surface. It allows parking in side yards that meet the definition of an approved paved driveway or an improved parking area. And it allows parking in backyards that meet the definition of a paved driveway or improved parking area. And it limits the number of vehicles allowed to be parked in a backyard to three. It's been revised to limit one vehicle to exceed the height of the fence line to a maximum of 12 feet and 6 inches. So if three vehicles are allowed, only one can exceed the height of the fence up to a max of 12 feet 6 inches. It maintains the current regulation of a five-foot side yard setback and a rear yard setback, as well as the front yard setback. And it allows the code, excuse me, the Community and Economic Development Director to approve minor adjustments with certain regulations, and it also provides an appeal process to the Planning Commission. So with that overview, staff is recommending that the City Council open the public hearing, receive public comment, waive the second reading, and adopt ordinance number 1165 by title. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, this is the second reading. We've already had one reading, then a revision and brought back for the introduction, and now tonight is the second reading. I'll remind everyone that when, for the class members that are here tonight, these ordinances are living documents, and living documents mean that they can be taken and they can be brought back at any time, and they can be revised if they're not working correctly. So I'll remind you that when we pass an ordinance, this goes into law so many days after we pass the ordinance, and then it becomes the law of the land in the City of Los Banos only. And then if there are revisions that are needed later on, then those revisions can come back. And just like the previous statement by the, by Director Elms and our police chief, these are to help with the cleaning up of Los Banas. And we are going to continue to work on these ordinance to make sure that they are stiff enough where people are not going to get away with having trash in front of the yard or old abandoned cars. So this is the start for this ordinance, and so at this time, I would like to open up the public hearing on ordinance number 1165, if there's anyone wishing to speak.
Is this on?
You are now.
Okay. Number one, I would like to thank you for looking at these ordinances. I think they're too loose now and what's being approved. I encourage all of the City Council to drive around and look. I see recreational vehicles on there. I see nothing about boats parked in driveways that are not covered and very seldom are moved. And I would like to see, also, I've met with the code enforcement administrator, Dana, and I understand that there are two full positions available. I think one is filled, one is not, and there's also a sergeant in the police department who oversees, helps enforce, doing the code enforcement. But I think you need to fully hire two people to go around and look for code violations. It's getting a little bit out of hand. I'm a boat owner. I choose not to park my boat in my driveway because I don't want my neighbors having to come out of their house and see it. Costs me $700 a year to store my boat in a storage facility here in town. And we have two other, two other people in our area that have, I know they have recreational vehicles or large trailers. They store them also, but you can see those around town. Some are probably legally parked and some are not. But I just encourage you to keep our town cleaner, better-looking, for everyone to enjoy. I appreciate the fact that you're updating this code, and I hope, once you've done that, that you will continue to look at this code and look around our town and make sure that it doesn't get any worse than it is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum or the public hearing on this item? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Ordinance number 1165, amending and reorganizing Article 20, Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to off-street parking, amending and reorganizing Article 32, Chapter 3, and Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to recreational vehicles. This is a second reading and adoption, so we are going to have two motions. Receive the staff report, which we've just done, open a public hearing, which we've done, and now we received our public comment. We've closed the public hearing, and we are going to now have two, two, two things that we need to do in order to adopt this, this, excuse me, this ordinance, and we have to waive the second reading, and then we have to adopt the ordinance as submitted. In the adoption, we have to do a roll call vote, which means each council member will vote individually. For the waiving of the second reading, it will be vote in unison. So at this time, ordinance number 1165, do I have a motion to waive the second reading? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1165 as read by title.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Johnson Santos, to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1165. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Mrs. Lewis, would you punch in again, please? Okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1165 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
I second that.
It's been motioned by Lewis, second by Johnson Santos, to adopt ordinance number 11665 as read by title. And could we have a roll call vote? Director Maloney?
Korea?
Yes?
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Valalta?
Yes. Let's go on to item C, Public Hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of General Plan Amendment 2018-01, Zone Change 2018-01, and a negative declaration, SCH number 2018101013, for the development of a new police department facility located at 1111 G Street, more specifically identified as a identified as assessors' parcel numbers 026161003 and a portion of 026161008. And Director Elms, are you going to give the presentation?
Yes, this is my last presentation for tonight.
Well, this is fantastic. Thank you.
So this is an exciting project. So just a little bit of background. Our existing police station currently consists of, actually, our police facilities currently consist of two buildings and also accessory buildings, and it's located in our downtown. The main police station was rehabbed in 1969, and it's much older, actually, than 1969. And the police annex was rehabbed in 1999 when the city purchased it for the police station, excuse me, for a police facility. We are currently staffed with 41 police officers and 26 non-sworn staff, and we have a robust citizen volunteers group. And we also maintain a type-one jail facility that can house up to 20 inmates. So the project before you tonight, staff is proposing to consolidate operations within a new 35,000 or so, plus or minus, square foot building for a new police station. This would include offices, new jail cells, parking, and would house possibly animal control and logistical facilities such as communications. The primary access would be from G Street, and we are currently undergoing a needs assessment to identify both physical and operational issues of space quality, layout, and detail. So we're currently undergoing that needs assessment. But as a part of the land acquisition of the property, which is located at 1111 G Street, we're looking at the proposed general plan amendment and zone change before you tonight. So the property, as I said, is located at 1111 G Street. It is just west of Mercy Springs and immediately west of the new courthouse, Merced County Courthouse, and it's highlighted for you in yellow. The current zoning is mixed use, general plan designation, and rail corridor, which is the zoning map designation. The purple is the rail corridor zoning designation. That darker pink color is general commercial, and the red is highway commercial. So according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study was prepared by EMC Planning Group, and the initial study did not identify any potential significant effect on the environment, and no substantial evidence that the project would have a significant effect on the environment. So staff prepared a notice of intent for a negative declaration. That notice of intent was posted with Merced County Clerk on October 5th, and was also sent to the California Office of Planning and Research, the State Clearing House, also on October 5th, as well as it was noticed in the Los Vanos Enterprise. And it ran for public review from October 5th to November 5th. We received two comments, two comment letters, one from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, which commented on the analysis and the methodology that EMC Planning Group used to calculate trips per day. That was reanalyzed, and it was determined that there was no significant effect. It did satisfy the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District's comments. And then we also received a comment from Chevron Environmental Group, just identifying that there was once an old crude oil line that ran parallel, adjacent to the old rail line, which is adjacent to this property. And it was just putting the city on notice that should there be any excavating, that there could be a potential for a run-in with that old crude oil line. However, that old crude oil line was remediated and removed back in the '70s. So the proposed uses in density before you tonight includes a general plan amendment from mixed use to civic institutional that would allow the use of the police facility on the site. Otherwise, if we were to build a police facility without this general plan amendment, we would not be in compliance with our own general plan. And we also need a zone change to designate this property from rail corridor to a public The analysis includes a look at compatibility of this property with the area and whether the zone change is compatible. And this would be compatible as this area is being developed as a public safety campus, and it is already adjacent to complementary uses such as the new courthouse. Public comment, notices were published in the Los Vanos Enterprise, and notices were mailed to the 300-foot radius of the project site on November 23rd, 2018. And as I previously stated, two comments were received. That was with the environmental document, not the public hearing notice, and we've addressed those issues. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council open the public hearing and close the public hearing, actually, open the public hearing and then provide a motion of intent to adopt resolution number 6029 to approve negative declaration, State Clearing House number 2018101013 for the Los Vanos Police Station Facility located at 1111 G Street. And then second, provide a motion of intent to adopt resolution number 6030 to approve general plan amendment number 2018-01 to amend the general plan land use map from mixed use to civic institutional on approximately 3.6 acres located at 1111 G Street. Third, to waive the first reading and introduce by title ordinance number 1167. And this would be to rezone the property from rail corridor to public facility on approximately 3.6 acres located at 1111 G Street. And then motion to continue the public hearing to December 19th, 2018. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. So council members, do you have any questions at this time before I open up the public hearing? Okay? All right. So now I would like to open up the public hearing on resolution number 6029 as read by title, resolution number 6030 as read by title, and ordinance number 1167 as read by title. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any of those items? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council level, and let's take resolution number 6029 first. Mr. Freya?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to approve resolution number 6029 as read by title.
Okay, do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis? Okay? It's been motioned by Freya, second by Lewis, to approve resolution number 6029. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay? Mr. Freya?
Stacy, are they not adopting it and just doing a motion of intent?
A motion of intent because it is being continued forward to December 19th.
Because they just adopted it, so should they revise that motion?
Um, or, the attorney, that's the environmental document, I think that's why it's being adopted.
Got it. Okay, Mr. Freya, motion of intent? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion of intent to adopt resolution number 6030, approving the general plan amendment 2018-001 for the Los Vanos Police Station Facility to re-designate properties from mixed use to civic institutional located at 1111 G Street, more specifically identified as assessors' parcel numbers 026-161-003 and portion of 026-161-008, and finding that the acquisition of the property is consistent with the city's general plan.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Second that.
Okay? It's been motioned, or, excuse me, yes, it's been motioned by Freya as a motion of intent to adopt resolution number 6030 and seconded by Johnson Santos. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? None. Okay? Mr. Freya, two motions.
Very good. The first motion is the ordinance, and the second is to continue the public hearing. Is that correct?
Uh, waive the first reading?
Right, waive the first reading introduction and the continuation of the public hearing. Is that included in this?
Yes.
This will be included? Okay, very good. Now, the question I have is, the waiving of the continuing of the public hearing, should it be included in the first reading or in the introduction, Mr. Vaughn?
You can do it in the introduction.
Okay, very good. So I would move to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1167 as read by title.
Okay? Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay? Motion by Freya, second by Lewis, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1167 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay? Let's go back again. Mr. Freya?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now I'd like to move to introduce ordinance number 1167 and to continue the public hearing to, it's December 19th, to the December 19th, 2018 meeting.
Okay? Do I have a second?
I have the last one.
Oh, here we go. You have to punch in again?
Yes.
Because I have to go through the rotation.
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned by Freya, second by Lewis, for the introduction of ordinance number 1167 and continuation to the December 19th meeting, and this is a roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Freya?
Yes?
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Valalta?
Yes, carried unanimously. Chief, we are just absolutely excited over this venture because it's taken a long time to get to this point, and soon we're going to have a new police station. So thank you all for all the efforts that everyone has put into this. All right. Any other comments by any council member on this item? Okay. Let's go on to Item 13, advisement of public notices. Community and Economic Development Director Elms, I thought that was your last item.
I know. I'm sorry. I forgot about the public notices. So we have four items. The first, actually, technically five. So we have, the first is Sunset Hills Development. It's, what is being proposed is four residential structures in the medium-density zoning district, and this is located at 649 and 661 East Street. It's an infill development project. And then also for Sunset Hills, we have a site plan review for an infill development project. This project is located actually downtown at 652 K Street. It's for a mixed-use development. It'll have two residential units upstairs and office space on the downstairs first floor totaling 3,192 square feet. And then the third item is for site plan review for Western Dental. They're proposing to locate in the highway commercial zoning district, actually at 1153 West Pacheco Boulevard. This would be between Jack in the Box and the 99-cent store on the west end of town.
New business?
Yep, and, yes, ground-up construction of 4,200 square feet. And a conditional use permit for Hostettler Outdoor LLC, and this is for accessory structures. There's existing billboards, and it's to modify those existing billboards at 3,400 East Pacheco Boulevard, and our code requires a conditional use permit for such requests. And then the last is a public meeting notice for Thursday, excuse me, December 13th, and this is for the discussion of possible state CDBG application for 2018. So for the community development block grant application, the notice of funding of availability was published on November 1st, and the application is due February 1st, and so we have to have public outreach to solicit input on this application. This would be for fiscal years 2019 and beyond. This would be from July 1st to June 30th. And so that public meeting is going to be held on December 13th at the Community Center at 6:00 PM. The previous public hearings will be held with the Planning Commission, and that's on December 12th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers at City Hall.
Thank you. Any comment, council members, on anything? Okay? Let's go on to Item 14, City Manager Report. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. Students, thanks for coming. Appreciate you taking the time to be here. I've been coming to council meetings for over 20 years, and I'm just starting to figure it out, so if it's a little confusing to you, it's okay. Really, it is okay. It's a lot to keep track of. Councilmember Silveira, thanks for your service. It's been a pleasure. Supervisor Obanion, thank you as well for your service. Brett, look forward to working with you. I know you've got some great ideas, so look forward to that. Tom and Mike, congratulations to you as well. Again, students, welcome, welcome. Thanks for coming. Look forward to seeing you, possibly some of you sitting up here in the dais someday, so thanks.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to City Council member reports, and tonight we will start with Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Mr. Jones. Welcome to the council. Congratulations to everyone who ran. The election process is highly important, so we all get the discussions out there of what everybody's thinking, and it helps to guide the council as we move forward, and life always moves forward. And if you're not moving forward with life, you're actually moving backwards because everybody's moving forward around you. So you ought to make sure you're always moving forward with the world. It's beautiful to see you, students, here tonight. As a teacher, I appreciate when students get involved in stuff, and the more involved you get, and the more interesting it becomes, and the more interesting it becomes. That's about as best as I can put it. When you read those, when you read those, on those agenda items, and you see APN numbers, that's the assessors' parcel number. What that is, the taxman has a book, and that tells you which book to look in, what page to look in, and where to look in the book to find that piece of property that you're looking for. And if you go into development and dealing with property at all, you live by APNs. So it's very important for you to learn how to understand and read those as students in the civics world. Police station, we're very excited about that. We brought the courthouse in courtesy of the state, and now we're going to be able to put a police station next to it, so it'll be a beautiful judicial center and a good location, excellent location for our city. And then I'm sure the mayor will talk about the Kiwanis Dinner that Mr. Valentine mentioned at Christmas Eve dinner. If you're looking for some public service, an opportunity to do that. Couple more things. I'll announce our concerts. Next Wednesday night's Los Vanos High School Choir, Los Vanos High School, and Pacheco High, your choir concert next Tuesday night. Mr. Hugling will be doing his there. And then, so next weekend, Los Vanos High on the 12th, next week. Then on the 19th is Creekside Junior High, which is another council meeting, but I will unfortunately be at that concert directing it. If I weren't there, there'd be no one to direct the concert, so. We hope to see you around. Friday night is the Christmas Parade. Santa Claus comes to town. It's very exciting, and the choirs sing for that, the bands play, people, a lot of people have floats. So we hope to see everybody there at the Christmas Parade, all bundled up in a nice cold winter time, maybe get some nice warm stuff, some nice hot chocolate or something to drink. Thanks for coming again tonight.
Okay, let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much. I just want to say it is very nice to see all of you here, whether it's by force or if you're actually interested. It's nice to see you here.
You're young enough to remember what it was like to be a student.
I usually don't have much to say, but I've got a list today. So Merced County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services is having an event at the Community Center, December 22nd at 3:00 PM. It's free dinner, Santa's going to be there, and it's going to be fun. I was there last year, and it was pretty nice. They had a lot to give away. I want to thank Mayor Valalta for choosing me for Mayor Pro Tem. I will try to do my best in your absence, but I hope you're not absent, if I'm being And I want to congratulate Brett. I'm sure I campaigned at one time, so I know that wasn't easy, the walking about and just a whole new, it's a whole new thing, but you're on planning, so you've had some experience. had some experience, but I know you'll do well, so, um, congratulations to Tom and Mike. I knew you guys would do all right, but congratulations nonetheless. Um, and also congratulations to Scott, you're not here anymore, but if you see this later, you've been a big help to me and my, uh, council adventures, so thank you. And to, uh, Mr. Obanion, congratulations and enjoy retirement. Um, and if we don't see you next week at our, our, our event, Merry Christmas to everyone. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jones?
I'd like to thank everybody for their, uh, help and support to, uh, get to this seat. Um, I don't have much to say, but I look forward to some of the improvements and some of the new businesses that are gonna be coming into, uh, town here in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, uh, I want to congratulate Brett, uh, for your new election, and to our mayor, and to Tom for reelection. I know it's not easy getting out there, uh, campaigning again. I've, I've done it once before, and it's a, it's a daunting task, so hats off to you for all the efforts that you made to be reelected. And to Scotty for his new position, and also to Jerry for his retirement, uh, time well deserved. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the staff, the mayor, and the council for allowing me to serve as Mayor Pro Tem this last year. Um, there were several events that, in the absence of the mayor, that I stood in on, uh, on for him, on his behalf, and, um, it's always, um, uh, a pleasure and an honor to be able to serve in that position. Uh, the mayor has a lot of events that he has to attend, and sometimes, uh, he's split like a fork in the road, and the Mayor Pro Tem has to step in and, and serve in that position. So, thank you again, council, for allowing me to have that privilege this year. Um, I'm excited also about our new police department, and possibly a new animal control department, which, uh, is something that, um, touches my heart, uh, so let's move forward on that, and, uh, we've looked at some, uh, examples of good animal control departments that have, uh, been built over the last few years, uh, around the valley, and, um, I'm excited about that, and, and I'm just really hoping that that's gonna be part of the agenda as well. I'd like to make a comment, um, about some, um, we, we had one person that made comment about some houses that don't pay into landscape lighting district, and they're gonna be recipients of sidewalks. Um, there was also comment about having an election and making everyone, uh, in Los Banos who's not in landscape lighting district be a part of that. But as I've been told, and somebody correct me if I'm not stating this correctly, if we do have an election, and if, if we don't receive the proper number of votes or percentage to put everyone in a landscape lighting district, then all landscape lighting districts in the city of Los Banos will go away. So, that means that there's no money collected for that, uh, all parks, all medians, uh, will not be taken care of, so we'll be in a worse condition. But, um, again, these particular houses that are gonna be recipients of the sidewalks and curb cutouts are in my district, and I have to say, I'm excited about it. I'm excited because whether it's SB 1, Measure V, or what other, other monies that are coming in from state and federal government, to help us put sidewalks and curb cutouts in this district are important to me, and I'm sure they're very important to the council. These homes happened to be built when the dam was being put in, they're over by the Colorado Park area, but just because a house didn't cost a lot of money back in the 50s doesn't mean that people don't deserve the same thing that everybody else has. Uh, it really bothered me and disturbed me when I would drive through that district and I would see children walking in the street, avoiding traffic, uh, on, on a narrow, the, the street was narrow as it was, and they're avoiding traffic, they have to walk in the streets to get to the bus stops to go to school. So, I'm really happy that our Public Works Department has made this a priority this year, that those houses are gonna be getting sidewalks and curb cutouts. The children in those areas will be able to walk safely to get to where they need to go, and it will be all the better for the neighborhoods. Those property values will go up as well for having that. There are some people in that, in the area that have put in sidewalks and curb, um, driveway cutouts on their own, uh, because they felt that they wanted that in front of their residents. So, now everybody in that area will eventually have the same as everyone else in the city of Los Banos, and that is a sidewalk and a, uh, a cutout for their car, uh, an approach for their car to go into their driveway. So, thank you to our public work staff, and I'm thankful for the tax dollars that are coming in to allow us to give these amenities to the residents in Los Banos, because those houses are deserving to have such. And lastly, um, I'd like to make an announcement that, I don't know if we could see this on the camera, uh, San Jose State University Choir and Choraliers will be coming to Los Banos this coming Sunday, uh, December the 9th at 7:00 PM, uh, to hold a free concert to the community, and the address is at 821 L Street, and that's at New Beginnings Church, which is right across the street from DMV. Uh, this choir, the Choraliers, have, uh, sung in Europe for the last 30 years, and they've sung at various venues throughout the United States, they performed at Carnegie Hall, they've sung with the Rolling Stones, and just a whole venue of different entertainment. Uh, they're quite well-known throughout the United States. So, if you love choral music and you want to hear an excellent choir that you'd have to pay a lot of money to hear, if you paid for it, please come, Sunday, uh, December the 9th, 7:00 PM, at New Beginnings Church on the corner of, uh, West Eye and L Street. We'll also be featuring this year, uh, Tom Faria's Concert Choir, to sing some songs at the end with, um, uh, San Jose State University Choir. Um, and I understand, um, I just found out recently that Pacheco has a choir as well. So, in the upcoming years, I'll be working with, uh, their choir director to see if we could make arrangements for Pacheco High School to have the same experience that Mr. Faria's choir is going to have. So, again, uh, it's free to the public, and, um, it's all been paid for, so just come, come enjoy a wonderful Christmas concert. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, congratulations, Mr. Faria. Uh, Mr. Faria and I started together, uh, 12 years ago on this council as council members, and, uh, and I have to tell you that, um, we've been through a lot of changes. The, uh, the, some that, that, uh, that impacted this town in such a way that we didn't have money at that time. And we've been through the high times, we've been through the very low times, and now we're making a comeback. And we're making a comeback thanks to staff and council, with everyone working together. And in order to accomplish things, you accomplish things as a team. And the five people up here are individuals, but they are team members for the good of Los Banos. And all of us have different opinions on what's for the good of Los Banos, but the main concern is the good of Los Banos. That's why we ran, and, uh, frankly, that's why we want to serve. So, in government, when you study government, you're gonna see sides of government that are selfishness sides of government, and you're gonna see very generous sides of government, where individuals truly, truly care about what's happening to us locally, in the county, in the state, and the federal system. You may not always agree, but that's what you have to do, is you have to weed out, after training with your, your teachers, you have to weed out and analyze the decisions that are made. So, I'm really glad you're here tonight, and please come back, and if you have any questions about things that are said, then we can either come to your classroom, or, uh, you can ask staff of, uh, of, uh, of items that were discussed tonight, and everyone will be happy to, to, uh, get back to you, to, to help you learn, and to help us see your opinions sometimes as to how you feel about the decisions that are made up here. So, with that, um, Mr. Faria, congratulations. Thank you so mu, thank you. 12 years together, 12 years together. Mr. Faria was also my music teacher when I was principal of the junior high school, so we've had a very long career together and a very successful one, so I, I, I appreciate your friendship and your guidance. Brett? Welcome? Yeah? We, uh, we don't rearrange seats, so you get the former member's council seat. And, uh, so when we started, when I started, I was on that end, and Mr. Faria has been on that end for, for 12 years. So, uh, so that, that's how it's, uh, been done, and we really appreciate, uh, you running. Uh, you fought, uh, a, a good race, a good, good campaign, and were successful, and so now you're here on this council. So, if we can be of any guidance to you or the staff, they will gladly, gladly do it. Thank you, thank you. Kiwanis Dinner. We're, uh, oh, and Kim and, uh, Kim, where's Kim Tomas? Is she here tonight? Did she leave? Kim, there you are. Congratulations. I forgot to, I forgot to say that, thank you.
He's hiding back there.
Did I miss anyone? And Lucy. Yes, I wanted to look, I forgot about that. Yeah, 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 yeah. These, these, these two women received 99 point something percent of the vote. Uh, no one ran against them, but they received 99% of the vote, okay? And that's always a good sign if no one runs against you and you receive that. That's a real good sign. Okay, Kiwanis Dinner on the 24th, very important function. The Kiwanis, for 28 years, have donated their time and their money to feed the less fortunate and people who need a meal on Christmas Eve. Uh, it's gonna be at Fire Station Number 1 on 7th Street. If you can show up to help, uh, you can, uh, please do so. Uh, it's always a great event. This community is so giving, and is so giving of the individuals that, that really need a help up. Not a handout, a help up. So, uh, this is just one function, uh, that, uh, that happens during that time. Uh, our Rotary Club gives away coats, uh, for kids and Angel Tree. Uh, we just had an, an event last night, Empty Bowls, where we, uh, I don't know, did anyone work at Empty Bowls last night? Were you guys here? Okay, so, we had a lot of Interact students who worked from the high school, and, uh, and, and we raise money, and then that money goes to the pastors, uh, to help out with those that are homeless or, or in need of, of canned food. Uh, the police department canned food drive, uh, you know, there is so much giving going on at Christmas time, and this is a very proud community. And for those of you who think there are things that need to be improved, help us out, and I will tell you that all the time, help us out. The Measure H, uh, just wanted to spend just a little bit about that, because, uh, I don't know how many of you, uh, how many of you have seen who's voted this year? Raise your hands. One person? Is everyone else 17? Okay, two, all right. Okay, so Measure H passed, and it needed a simple majority, which means 50 plus one vote, 50% plus one vote. It passed by 66.13%, is that about right? Okay, 66.13%, which, which is excellent. That money is going to raise $2.5 million a year. A half a penny raises $2.5 million a year in this community. And what we're going to do is, at a minimum, we're gonna be hiring seven new police officers, two fire and one dispatcher, to route the calls for emergency services, and to help guide this town and also to protect it. Public safety is of the paramount importance in this community, I will tell you. You have to feel safe, and you have to have running water, Public Works, and you have to have the right stuff flowing downhill. Because you want to get the people mad at you, that'll get them mad right away. Everything else goes out the window if you don't have running water. So, Measure H is, is a real booster for us in this community, because money's gonna go to, uh, uh, recreation, money's gonna go to public safety, and of that public safety, there are various forms of how we can improve, uh, streets and roads, uh, can also be included in this, and public safety could be included to how to make our town safer. Maybe we could have a camera reading, assist the cameras, uh, in the downtown, throughout Los Banos, a network of systems. Maybe, uh, we could have license plate readers to make sure that the bad guys coming through town will get caught. Um, there, there, there are just a lot of things that we can do, but we couldn't do those things, and we couldn't afford all these amenities without the Measure H. And so, I just want to thank the community, thank you, thank you for seeing fit to pass Measure H and giving us more dollars in order to work with our community. Very important, and I, and believe me, one thing was asked about Measure H, there's no guarantee, the money goes into general fund. Well, I'm here tonight to tell you that there was a plan for Measure H. Every person on this council, staff and council members, and now Council Member Jones, we have a plan for that money, and that's the plan that we're going to follow. We have an oversight committee. That oversight committee is gonna be looking over our shoulder to see that we spend that money correctly. So, thank you so much, thank you so much for passing Measure H. And with that, uh, don't forget about the Christmas Eve Dinner, uh, December 24th, Kiwanis, and the Christmas Eve Parade that's coming up, um, all these things in Los Banos, and thank you for coming this evening. Meeting adjourned at 8:43.